And we'll enact. Whose turn is it? Dale?
Is it mine, Tom, or yours?
I think it might be mine. Didn't you, weren't you in on the last meeting?
Could be. I, I could, could be.
And Tom?
It sounds like it's Tom.
It's Tom.
We will enact Tom as a voting member to replace Larry. And did everyone go over the minutes from the last two meetings? Twenty second, let's start there. Are there any concerns or corrections? Do I hear a motion to the March twenty second meeting? We need a first.
Me.
Oh, she did.
Okay, Heather got that, I hope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain?
I'll abstain since I wasn't at the meeting.
And April twelfth? Have we all had a chance to read through? Are there any corrections or additions to the April twelfth meeting minutes? That was the one I think I had to leave in the middle because the power went out.
You're not excused.
Had to make sure it wasn't just my house that died. Yet corrections? Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved.
Approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? So here. Now, CJ, do we have anyone in the waiting room for the privilege of the floor?
I believe there may be somebody. I do not know who they are. It just says work R, so I can admit them and see what they have to say.
Yep. Let's see if they're here for that reason. Mister Ward or Mrs. Ward or our work?
That's correct.
Are you here for the privilege of the floor?
Only if needed, I'm filling in for Brett Hughes on the Marabato Lansing Project.
Okay, so we'll call you when that one comes up.
Sounds great.
Thank you. So there's one here for privilege of the floor then?
No, no one's here.
Mister Dick, would you like to give us the liaison report from the town board?
No, but I will.
We know you enjoy it.
Okay.
Well, our last meeting was Wednesday of last week. We had an introduction to Clean Energy Communities Leadership Round from Cornell Cooperative Extension of Tompkins County by Terry Carroll. That was very informative. Presentation on the Tunnel Lansing Natural Resources Inventory and the Conservation Advisory Council with Carrie Caplica-Lair and also Tom Butler. We had one person at the privilege of the floor. And it was Carrie Caplica-Lair concerning Ross Road decommissioning. And I will ask that if you have any questions on that, please see CJ, as I was instructed. Or talk to CJ, or email CJ, whatever it may be, through our cons. We have all our board member reports, which are probably going to be online shortly. So I won't go into them. Our consent agenda consisted of about ten things. We had a motion authorizing supervisor to sign Lansing Youth Services Agreement. A motion authorizing supervisor to sign in Cero and Company CPAs LLP engagement letter. A motion authorizing stormwater operating, operating and management reporting agreement for Hazinga Holdings. A motion authorizing stormwater operating management and reporting agreement for Lansing Renewables. A motion authorizing stormwater operating and management reporting agreement for the Cuba Lake National Bank. A resolution hiring part-time seasonal park and recreation campground manager for the Town of Lansing. A resolution endorsing pre-application of SDM Rentals Incorporated to Tompkins County Industrial Development Agency Lansing Town Center Incentive Zone Program. There's a resolution accepting a resignation of Eileen Stout and appointing Ethan, but Eric to the Tunnel Lansing Advisory Committee on the Power Plant Future. A resolution authorizing the supervisor to exec, to execute an independent contractor agreement with Sue Munson for 2021 Administrative Assistance Services for the Plan and Coding Enforcement Department. A resolution accepting Lynn Day's retirement letter as the Town Lansing Code Enforcement Officer. And authorizing the director planning to hire a Town of Lansing Code. Doning Code Fire Enforcement Officer and an additional Town of Lansing Planner. A resolution approving audit and budget modifications and supervisors' report. And there was one more resolution, resolution that I forgot to write down. That was added was with Mrs. Munson. Joe, or CJ, or somebody, if you remember that, please speak up at the end. A resolution on the stands alone. Resolution authorizing supervisor execute independent contractor agreement with Clarity Connect Incorporated to develop electro, electronic mapping, deliverability, identifying broadband in underserved areas. Later board member reports. We had a work session for several different grants, Community Development Block Grant for the coronavirus. And 2021 Grant Overview, the Appalachian Region Commission, ARC, Area Development 2021 Grant Overview. Bridge, New York, 2021 Grant Discussion on Doug Road Bridge and Drake Road Culvert. Then we went into executive session, and I can't tell you that. So. Joe? Or CJ, could you, could you please fill them in on the last resolution that we had? Not the last one, we inserted it around G.
Was for Sue Munson?
No. It was something else.
I'm looking at the.
It was to hire, it was to authorize the hiring of Lama Real Estate to advise on a land acquisition issue and to provide for professional consulting services on commercial real estate.
Thank you, Guy.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Doug. Does anyone have any questions for Doug?
So Doug, is the position changing Lynn Day's position, or was it always?
It was always there. I think other than maybe the fire inspections, I think Mr. Purcell took care of that from the fire department, some of that. Other than that, everything else is on lens, was on, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
So when is Lynn retiring?
Let's see, I think his last day in the office is going to be, I want to say Tuesday, June eighth.
Wow.
It's coming up quick.
Do we have any candidates for replacing him?
Yeah, we got a lot of great candidates for both. Not that many, but you know, a bunch, you know, heading towards double digits for both positions. So that was great.
And code office, code officer and SMO are still going to be a combined.
That's a really good question. There could be some opportunity for the new planner if they were CPESC certified, or they had stormwater background. They, they could also act as SMO as well, too. So we'll kind of see how those pieces fit together.
Is, is the new planning position half time or full time?
The town board was okay with offering a full-time position, so we posted that as both part-time and full-time. So, so we'll see.
Very nice. Any other questions? Dean, I see has changed his name to Lydia.
Lydia.
All right, we'll move on to item number six, the project at four seventy-five Lansingville Road. It's a lot line adjustment. We don't have a lot of information on it.
Just an adjacent field.
It's an adjacent field. It's just being purchased by evidently from the Beards to Jeff. Is that correct, CJ?
Yep, that's correct. We're just referring it to the board, looking for a, a motion to authorize me to do the lot line adjustment. I just wanted to make sure that was a fairly complicated. In kind of a strange configuration of the lot lines. I just wanted to make sure you were able to, to view that.
What was the rationale for the strange shape of the lot lines?
It actually, it follows the, the conditions on the ground, actually. So if you look at the ortho imagery, which we can, if you'd like. It actually follows the fields essentially, and it's kind of an area carved out with the house. So, okay. I can bring that up, too.
And all of these distances are legal with the fire department and looks like we've got some skinny driveways there, but they may have always been that way or been that way for a long time. Is that true?
Yeah, they're not adding any structures as far as I understand it. And the, all of the parcels that are being quote created are being conveyed. So the fields are essentially are going with the agricultural prop, existing agricultural properties. So let me just show you here.
Is there any other questions or comments?
It frees up a landlot, proper, proper grounds lot as well. It was only accessible by easement.
Yes, the board would like, I just can show you just quickly. This is the parcel as it is, and you can kind of see how the lot line essentially follows the area around the existing house, and then it allows the rest of this fields to be utilized.
So what's the next step we need to take?
If you, if the board wishes, you could just make a motion to authorize me, director planning, to execute this as a lot line adjustment.
Can I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And this is all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm doing it. I'm pretty close to Jeff.
Opposed? Abstain? You're abstaining, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm too close to it.
All right, CJ, I think you are so.
Thank you.
And the next one is a project at Lansing Propane?
Yes, I have both a town or third-party fire protection engineering consultant here as well from Rand, and I also have the applicants as well. So just let me know how you'd like to admit them.
When we left this last time, we had the, the fellow from expert on fire control was going to give us a report, which I don't think we've actually seen here.
We did not receive it in time for the printed packet, but it was distributed via email. So hopefully you're able to see that. And he's also here. And he could speak to the report as well, certainly.
I read the printed packet, but I didn't read my email.
Me, too.
Yeah.
So we would like information about that report.
Yeah, can you highlight that for us, please?
Absolutely, we can admit it's in here. So hold on just a moment.
Hello, Tim. Many of us, evidently the report didn't make it into the printed copies. And many of us failed to read our emails. So could you give us a quick conceptual, what's have, what you wrote in the report? Overview? Summary?
Sure. If you want to hold on just a second, I'll get this up on my screen here. Okay, this is dated the twenty-third, which was from an update from a site plan that Marabito provided. I believe it was Wednesday, maybe it was Thursday last week. So the information that we had was revised site plan that included a couple of notes on that drawing that was different from the original one. Our comments were as follows, and they're numbered one through seven. Item one was just a general statement that the fire flow information from the hydrant that's closest to the driveway should be included on the site plan. Once that's tied in there, and I think the fire chief at that one time indicated there was twelve or fourteen hundred, I can't remember the number, some gallons per minute that was available, but that becomes part of record so that we know that there is a water supply that's available for firefighting purposes. So that was a comment. Item number two, there was a, an additional note from the last time we were together that talked specifically about NFPA thirty, which is the National Fire Protection Association Standard Thirty on flammable and the storage use and of various flammable and combustible liquids. So that information was included in the drawing. Our comment number two indicates that we want to make sure that not just only that NFPA thirty was included, but also the requirements of the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code, including the 2020 Fire Code of New York with particular attention to, but not limited to chapters fifty, fifty-seven, and sixty-one, which are primarily for flammable combustible liquids and propane storage. So that's just a clarification. Comment three was probably the most substantive type, and this is talking specifically about the three thirty thousand gallon above-ground storage tanks for petroleum products could be class one liquids, which is similar to what you and I would know as gasolines or combustible liquids, which would be more like diesel fuels or fuel oils, those kind of things. In that, in the, the layout, there was reference to a thirty-foot by fifty-foot truck loading rack, which is essentially the location where the bulk truck comes up and either transfers liquid into the truck, or from the truck, takes it from there and transfers it into the tanks. When those were shown on the drawing, the three thirty thousand gallon tanks are adjacent to one another. It doesn't show specific distances other than they're connected right on top of each other. There was a reference to a, in a previously uploaded document to a UL one forty-two steel flammable combustible liquid storage tank, which in this case, it's, that's the right standard. That's something that's used. It's a, it's a tank that's been tested by UL for storing flammable combustible liquids. And has a little, it's basically set inside of a box then, that if there was a leak in the tank, it would only go into that exterior box, basically, and it's all steel. But those were then referenced on the drawings that those would be partially underground, partially above ground. And obviously, that has to be with, you know, foundations, et cetera. The concern here, not to say that's not being taken care of, it's just not clear on the drawing. The concern is the standards and the reference codes don't want to have the ability to have a fuel leak and then a consequent fire that would go and carry a fire from underneath one tank to the next tank. No, there was, if there was a problem in one and it caught fire, you don't want it exposed to the other tank that's next door, that's right next to it. And, and in addition to that, also I apologize, I didn't realize it, my little, my screen was off here. Also, the the fuel truck loading rack area is right next to those storage tanks with no real reference to elevations and, you know, how that would be separated. Now, this, the NFPA standards in the fire code talks about a distance separation. Some things say fifteen feet, some things say twenty-five feet, a reference about a distant separation from the loading rack to the tank storage with a premise that if there was, if there was a fire event, if there was a problem at the storage tank, it would not affect the truck that's loading or offloading. And conversely, if there was a problem at the truck where there was leakage and/or a fire event, it would not expose, and that's probably the more severe exposure, it would not expose the tanks themselves. So our first comment in item three A, while UL one forty-two is a steel tank, in order, if there is a fire, that kind of tank does allow the tank to be heated when certain grading and other conditions are there. Since it's not clear, we don't really know how the concrete, like the vaults that they're sticking these tanks in. We're not sure how they're going to go through and do that. So we're suggesting the possibility to consider the use of what they would call a protected tank. A protected tank is a UL twenty eighty-five tank, and essentially it has all of the same attributes as the other tanks, but it has a, a layer of concrete or some kind of mineral insulation, so that if you do get fire exposure onto the tank, it doesn't do anything. So it essentially helps take away any concern from the fire department or the need for the fire department, the fire service to actually put water on that tank to keep it cool. So the tank doesn't continue to pressurize and potentially fail or have a problem. They are commercially available as just a suggestion. So that's what item three A reads. It's certainly there's other ways to deal with that with a UL one forty-two tank, with the vaults that they build, with making the walls high so that you can't actually get a line of sight onto the tank, but that would change how it looks. So this, that's one of the items that that's there. Item three B is specifically talking about the arrangements, because it, it did say in the application that those vaults where the, or actually the pads that are, that those tanks are being rested upon would be, have drainage going out the end of the, to end of that vault. And when you do that, what we, we don't know, because there's just a general grading plan, we have to make sure that if there was a leak, even in the containment area, that that, that flammable liquid or combustible liquid would not float underneath one of the other tanks. And more importantly, would float and run to the retention pond. And since most petroleum products, or at least all petroleum products, if they're hydrocarbon-based, they're lighter than water. When the fire department comes and starts spraying water out, try to put a fire out, and if they don't have enough foam, what you have a tendency to do is to make the, the flammable combustible liquid float, and then that floats over. And if there's enough water, there is the possibility of starting to fill some of that retention pond, and then you would have a flammable liquid float on top of that and then leave the site. So what we're suggesting is also in the outfall, and I talked this over with a town engineer. In the outfall, they have a manual valve so that you could drain the water off under, in the lower area to try to keep that product on site. It's a pretty common thing to do. It's nothing unusual, but nothing was referenced specifically about that. Item three C, it talks about that truck rack. While the referenced notes on the drawing says they're going to comply with NFPA thirty and et cetera, the fire code. There certainly now becomes questions in my mind on while the trucks are going to come in and go out, they have turn radiuses and other things to be able to maneuver. If there's supposed to be a separation, then the question is, how does that affect the rest of the site plan? That's not what we're here to comment on, but that's certainly something to be cognizant of. So how does it work with the truck traffic? And then item three D, there's this fire code section, and this gets back later on. But this is really a site assessment on the applicant's piece that talks about storage of flammable and combustible liquid storage. The information they presented before was for the propane storage, not for the, for the liquid storage. And that would be, what are the various spill, leak, or tank discharge scenarios, whether it be a fire or not a fire, and what is expected of the responding fire department? We don't want to rely totally upon the fire department, even though that often happens, but we want to try to plan this appropriately. So that might be just a relatively simple document for them to look at. How hap, how that happens, and how can you make sure that we funnel basically any, any large spills to stay away from the tanks and away from the truck loading racks. So it's a lot, a lot of it has to do with grading there. Stormwater is one thing, but then we have flammable liquids, and if you've ever been involved with ten thousand gallons of fuel leaking and burning, it becomes quite exciting. And that's something that we certainly would want to have something going on here. Item four in our note was the, the note about additional billiards and a newly, newly designated small propane tank storage area. Right now, it's unclear in how far away that is from the main valves of that propane, the larger, you know, thirty thousand gallon propane storage tank. Typically, they are underneath in the middle of the belly of the tank, if you will. And that sort of shows these, these tanks, you know, these, I'm assuming these are the four hundred pound, one hundred pound, whatever size tanks that are there. It somewhat shows that in the middle of that, middle of that area. It's suggested to potentially move those to a a further away site, maybe down at the end where the valves are used, where they're filling, instead of having that rate close to where those other belly tank piping is such as is located. That was note number five. I'm sorry, note number four. Number five was a dumpster, not really a big deal. Fire service goes to dumpster fires quite often. There is a section in the fire code that talks about keeping a dumpster away from a building by a certain number of feet. Or provided braided walls and eaves, so if the dumpster caught on fire, it wouldn't catch the building on fire, that, you know, that goes on and on. So that was a note number five. A suggestion potentially for security cameras in the site lighting, I think was discussed last time. That's always just a good loss prevention type of arrangement, and it also gives a little bit better idea of what's going on when there is a large incident that's going on in that place. And then lastly, not any kind of code requirements, but a suggestion and the potential for fire detection or sprinkling protection of the garage and office building, even if it's not required by code. So those are the general items. I think we went through a lot of those things last month. And I'm available to answer any other questions you might have there.
Are there questions for Mister DeRouche? Did I say that right?
DeRouche, close enough.
DeRouche. Well, thank you very much, Tim.
Very helpful.
Yes, very helpful. And do we have, CJ, do we have the fellow from Marabato? In, he'd like to respond, has he had a chance to go over this report? You know?
They did get all this information. Yes, absolutely. As soon as I received it.
I'm not seeing a copy of the report in my email, which I checked while he was. Just with you with us.
Okay, I'll check it out, I just admitted applicants to the room.
Thank you. Yes, very helpful. And do we have CJ, do we have the fellow from Moravito?
Someone's got their YouTube on.
Someone's in here with YouTube. You know?
They did get all this information.
I'm here. Don't believe I'm, I think I'm on Zoom and not YouTube.
Yep, somebody was on YouTube because we could hear the. The delay.
That was my fault.
I mean, whoever wants to speak to this, we you have received the report from Mr. DeRouche. And. Have had a chance to to come up with some explanations or some. Design characteristics that would take care of these.
I just wanted to make a comment. Just kind of a general overview. Rabidow. Their application pertains to. The use of the the property for petroleum bulk storage. And the site plan is meant to depict. What is supposed to be going on out there if it gets approved for petroleum bulk storage? And it's understood. That any petroleum bulk storage activities would be done in accordance with. NFPA, DEC, EPA requirements. I've not run across. Having to put. A lot of this detail, it's been called out in this report on a site plan. Since the basic question before the board. Is is it an acceptable use to put petroleum bulk storage? On this property. Is it understanding that it's going to be done in accordance with the regulations that govern the situation? That's just my general comment.
Well, we have a responsibility to make sure that the fire department and traffic and the neighbors remain. Comfortable with the fact that you're going in there. And so we are trying to. Do due diligence to make sure that we are. Are respecting the safety of those around them. And part of that has comes under the if I'm. Correct, part of that comes under the purview of site review. So again, do you have any comments to make to Tim's report? And some of the issues that he brought up?
I'm assuming Russell works on here, yeah, Russell, Russell's on here. But again, a lot of. What I see is, I mean, it's certainly regulation based. You know, the first comment regarding hydrant fire flow. I've spoken with Bolton Point. You know, there's a hundred PSI out there in an eight inch line, it's more than adequate to handle fire flows. That's just, I mean, I'm sure it was installed that way. You know, in advance of potential fire fires up there even with the with the town barn and whatnot. So there's there's plenty of flow there. You know, I certainly can put on the drawing, expand the the note that refers to that NFPA thirty just to make sure that. It's understood that we're also going to do this in accordance with the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. Et cetera. Some of the other stuff. I mean, it's, I'm sure it's spot on. But just kind of gets a little bit into the weeds of this more specifics of the the actual. Tanks and whatnot, which, you know, again, would be constructed and installed. Same thing with a loading rack in accordance with DEC and EPA regulations. We basically show on site plan where these activities are going to take place. And we've given. You know, what they normally have for containment for these thirty thousand gallon tanks. You know, so that's that's just kind of my. My overview comment again of what what's being presented here. That, you know, I'm not sure if that adds any value to how you guys evaluate this, but. You know, I'm kind of looking at for more from a little different perspective because Morabio is trying to get permission. To do this more than, you know, get into the specifics of. Separations and tank types and all that kind of stuff. Maybe Russell can speak to that a little better than I can.
Yeah, basically what I can say on that was, I mean, we like like Wayne said, we are we're meeting. All NFPA. Guidance from the. New York State DEC and the EPA on these on this UL one forty two tanks, which is the standard of what goes in place. The only time you see these vaulted tanks or concrete would be impact zones like at an airport, not not in a bulk plant such as this. So I mean, this is within all of the laws and regulations, this tank can design and set up on how this is situated. By all the guidance that we have and all the all the bulk plants that we do build in multiple states. And it's better than what's downtown in Ithaca now. I don't see. Why we have to go above and beyond what's permitted and regulated and approved by the standard we're putting forth.
Tim, do you have a comment on that?
No, I think the only comment is we just want people to be cognizant that there. If there's a spatial distance issue. That. Becomes a requirement and then it doesn't fit within the realms of what's been laid out and shown. That was probably more along the line, I mean, we're not saying you have to use. The protected tank, if you used a different kind of arrangement with a with a vault walls that come up. And you have separation and. No direct impingement going on to those tanks or close enough so radiation gets those those tanks hot. It's. It is a. Recognized way to do business is the UL one forty two. One option would be used of the protected tank. And what we're trying to just bring to the attention of the board is. That UL one forty two. In conjunction with other vault walls, basically it's a wall that's high enough, the tank's below it. So you can't physically see it, that may be a perfectly acceptable way, but there's no way to show that and. Our our role in here is to help. Recognize what fire protection concerns there may be. And total reliance on the local responding fire department to to cool these tanks. Could be problematic based upon. Time, distance, all the other kind of issues that local fire departments have today. That there may be an easier way to do that. We're just bringing the points up and then I think it's up to the applicants to go through and figure out how to deal with it and how to respond. We're not saying it can't be done this way, but right now those are some items that need to be addressed. And if they fit within the confines of the boxes that you're showing there. Okay, but what if it does it now there's a tank truck that can't turn around because you got to move the the truck loading area fifteen or twenty feet over. But that's the only point.
Understood, no, and we, I don't take it lightly, I'm listening very intently here and I understand exactly what you're saying and some potential concerns, thank you.
I think if I can make an editorial comment, we get site plans that are often several pages. There's a page that basically out another page with elevations and another page with. About stormwater. You turned in something that. When I was teaching, I would call a C project or maybe a C plus. I think there's a lot more detail and a lot more. Attention so that we can make an informed judgment about the safety of this site that is. It is near houses, it's near a grocery store. It's near a high traffic area. I just think you don't have to put, I wouldn't say you had to have all the detail on just one page, but. We often get supplemental pages on site plans.
I can, I can appreciate your comment. The thing that's different about this, this is a phase two. We've already been down through phase one. We were approved for phase one. This is and all that's being proposed here, it was already known five years ago. That that we were going to come back at some point to propose petroleum bulk storage. So all the issues that you might not see addressed. In this were already addressed in phase one.
No, we knew that it was going to happen, but we had no details on how things were going to happen. And I think that's that's just what is important right now.
And there's also a child's or children's law field very nearby. I mean, heaven forbid anything happen and the kids are out playing on that playground. Huge liability, I would think.
And cars parked along the road.
I've got a question. Who who does the final and once this is. You assuming you get your approval and the construction is done, who does the final inspection and signs off that everything is is. Is compatible, the standards is at the DEC, who does that final inspection?
Morabido will need to get a DEC approval, there will be. A number, I'm assuming assigned to this that will define. What specific petroleum bulk storage there is. On this property and there's a certain application process that has to be done with the DEC. They have to review this.
That that's correct. We'll visit the site and sign off on it with the separation distances and all the items that have come up today. To make sure that the standards have been met, that's correct.
That is correct.
So the preliminary notification would go to the DEC within temp. Of what and I'm doing and drawings. And then the installer, the tank installer is the one that would install the tanks and the loading rack and the systems. He would sign off saying, okay, here's the here's the test on the piping, these are the tanks, these meet this listings. This goes to the UP, to the DEC for final approval and then they normally inspect. And they're not going to authorize the use of the site with an app for the registration. Until they look at and say, okay, this is deemed safe for operation, you meet all the requirements.
Okay, thank you, okay, good.
Are there any other questions?
Sure, there was a point brought up about the. A valve at the bottom in the center of the propane tank. That potentially needs to be accessed, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, there's usually you there obviously are valves coming off the propane tank that you use to go through and. Go to the filling station and filling up the tank, et cetera. I don't know where those are specifically for this tank typically. They're in the middle, near the middle with sometimes. A little off area with a, you know, a little enclosed fence in an area where you're actually. Make connections and filler or transfer liquids with a small little pump. I don't know the specifics on this one, but that's what I was surmising.
So I'm assuming from the drawing that that's potentially in the fenced in area on the east end, is that correct? Speaking to the applicant.
I'm I'm not that familiar with exactly where everything is on the tank, the area was shown behind the bollards. Just to to depict a location where the miscellaneous tanks, the empty. Propane tanks that are strewn on the property would be confined. Easily accessible but in stored in an orderly way. In the area of the propane storage, so it's basically confined to one section of the the property, I don't think there's. Any reason that can't be moved to a more convenient location or or something that makes more sense than where it was depicted.
What about the valve that he was talking about that would allow the water to. Escape from the stormwater retention pond. Underneath some flammable liquid that may be floating on top of it. Is that part of the NFPA code?
So I'm not there. At this point, there's no control on the outlet of the stormwater pond that. Could be valved off of everything in the area. Of the petroleum bulk storage area would flow into the four bay. Four bay has to fill up before it can actually get into the stormwater pond. So pretty much anything that would come from. The petroleum bulk storage area would go into the four bay, but before we even get to the. Four bay, there there's a minimum of a hundred and ten percent storage of. You know, containment area for all all of those tanks, so each individual tank has minimum a hundred and ten percent. Of containment availability, there's usually a valve. Control at the bottom of these containment areas if if water. Collects in there or, you know, if there was a spill, then then there would be product. But most of the time. Those areas are accessed, the the valves are undone to let out built up stormwater. And normally you just don't let that out, you have to make sure there's no ball, no product. In that water before it's let out. But the purpose of that is just because there's accumulation of precipitation a lot of times, so. So that's the first that inside the original containment structures where. Anything is going to go initially before it actually would get out of the containment and onto the stormwater pond. So.
That that's correct and in the New York State DEC, they require all of those valves to be in the locked position to ensure. That if there was ever an issue from one of those tanks or piping, it wouldn't immediately be discharged. We're required to check those every week. And then once a month per US EPA, you look to ensure that there's no sheen on that at all, let alone liquid product machine. And it's illegal to discharge even with a sheen. Unless you call a contractor and they have to pump it out, so it's it's a rigorous. And a very hands on thing that has to be done every single week to check those containments. And that's why they allow the hundred and ten percent because they figure with rain over the course of a week, you might. Encapsulate ten percent of rainwater in that and they still want to ensure if that tank was filled right to the top, it would still hold it. Get a little bit more of a grace period because we only fill our tanks to ninety percent and sure. That we don't overfill these tanks at any time, so it's all a documented process and and a lot of this is also detailed. In the spill prevention control encounters measured plan required by the EPA. That's kind of what you guys hit on on item number D. Where we should perform a site assessment on the various spill leak and tank discharge scenarios. That all has to be categorized a hundred percent by law. So that is something we would have in place to show if anything went wrong with with the location, whether it's the dike. The tank, any kind of a piping loading rack, exactly where that discharge goes and how much it could be. For just a small leak or a catastrophic event, so we would hit B on this on this item checklist right now that you guys have questions about.
And I'm assuming and I. I'm pretty sure it's a correct assumption that if the fire department came during a catastrophic event. They would not be in a position to throw enough water on this thing, so it would overflow into the stormwater retention pond. And then flow out with. A flammable liquid on top of it. Is that correct? In other words, you have a hundred and ten percent storage and. All of this storage you're talking about right now is. Is including the concept that fire departments are going to be putting foam and whatever else they may need. Obviously, they're going to be using some water at some point because we have the hydrant there and that's been a. A concern, but having never been a firefighter myself. I have no idea how you guys make all this work.
So the hundred and ten percent is just the steel containments around the tank. Wayne is in a better position to talk about what those retention ponds hold, but the containments themselves hold one hundred and ten percent. The steel around the tanks themselves.
So that's a leak. So that's a leak of product, right? Some.
Right.
Not in the case of a leak of product that catches on fire. And then something has to come in to try to, to put out the fire. And could that whatever added to whatever's there in the way of product. End up overflowing into our storm retention pond?
If if that happened, there's, there's literally tens of thousands of storage gallons. In the stormwater ponds, both in the four bay and in the main pond. There's only supposed to be um essentially about a two foot permanent pool in the bottom of that. But above that, there's several feet uh of uh. Area of above that with, with, like I say, tens of thousands of gallons of potential storage. Um, that before it would get offsite.
So it's very, very unlikely.
It, it's very unlikely that you could.
We would assume that our fire department knows better than to dump enough water in there to. To have it run into the stormwater anyway, stormwater retention pond.
You know, the, the, the volume associated with those stormwater ponds are supposed to contain a hun- a hundred year storm. They're supposed to control a hundred year storm, so there's, there's a lot of storage there.
Yeah.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. I'm not disagreeing with anything that's said here, but just for the board. Being in the fire service for forty plus years on top of the other engineering portions. The regulations, D E C, E P A, et cetera, have done a fantastic job at containing and keeping everything together. Just like the applicants have said, keeping products where it's, where it's supposed to go, helping it to operate in a safe manner. But unfortunately, sometimes there are failures. While it's primarily focused as an environmental item. When there are cases where there are fires that are large. They do end up ultimately, in some cases, leaving that re- that original hundred and ten percent capacity. And then with the fire department being there, large fire, big fire, whatever else, there was no question in my mind. There will be lots of water trying to cool things around it, keep the other tanks from being heated up. So that was the only reason for that comment is that it's likely there will be. A lot of water, a lot of firefighting water. Coming onto the other tanks, it's all ultimately going to drain to the stormwater retention pond. You hope that it's going to have enough. As Mr. Madison says, there is tens of thousands of gallons there, that's true. But if over a period of two hours or three hours, we're putting, you know, uh. Six to eight, ten thousand gallons or whatever in an hour on that, it changes things. And things ultimately end up going awry and the only people that are there to help stop it. Is not a D E C will spill response team, it's the fire department this and the hazmat team. Which is there to try to resolve the situation. So that's why those are brought up, it is remote. The possibilities of that is remote, but there are some simple things that could be done that in the planning stage would make sense, in my opinion. Just as that valve would be, um, so that there is the ability to. Let that drain down if that was a, a situation that you ran into. Because if, if those tanks fail and it goes beyond the, the initial containment, it's going into the retention pond. We just have to make sure that grading is funneled such, such a way that it goes there and it doesn't go anyplace else.
That makes sense.
The valve also seems to make a lot of sense to me to allow the water out from underneath to reduce it in case you needed to. And it doesn't seem like that'd be a very big. Very big problem. I remember having to put a couple of ten thousand gallon tanks into. Hold sediment that might come off a parking lot or the hotel that I thought was a little bit of overkill, but I still had to do it.
Is there, is there enough of a gradient so that the retention pond could actually drain? I mean, the retention pond is, is practically right up against the boundary. And if I remember correctly, it looks like it's more or less below ground.
Yeah, that, well, it, it's. May or be, may or not be a little bit below ground, but it's certainly below the level of. Um, anything that we construct as far as petroleum bulk storage. But the stormwater ponds are designed to release water at a certain rate. And they're sized according to that based on storms that, you know, design storms, hundred year storms, ten year storms, that sort of thing. So um, the, it would go, anything that would flow from. The petroleum bulk storage area would go to the four bay. Because there's a couple of, I think there's three catch basins on the property. And all of them go to a pipe that goes to the four bay. So anything from the surface heading toward the stormwater pond has to be collected by any of those. Uh, catch basins that are directed to the four bay, so it has to go to the four bay first. And that, and as I said, the four bay has to nearly fill up before it spills over into the main part of the stormwater pond. Um, so that's, there, there's a lot of, lot of volume and and the degrading. Um, favors going to the four bay first and then into the main stormwater pond.
So the four bay is what you've got. Um, noted as outfall.
Yes, correct, yep, yep.
And the four bay drains from the bottom, or does it drain from the top into the storm?
It, it go, it fills up to a certain level and then spills over the top. There's, there's a, a, it's shaped so that it, there's like a weir on the top of it.
And so that's not a series of tanks? I mean, you call it a four bay, but what's the reason for calling it that? Pardon my ignorance?
Uh, four bay just is the area that all the stormwater goes initially to settle any contaminants. So it's the bay before the main part of the pond.
F O R E bay.
Right, right. Yep.
Thank you.
So you're slowing everything down so the sediments will drop out before it gets into the stormwater pond retention.
That's correct.
But it's not doing anything for us if we have a lot of water with flammable liquid on the top. It's not going to keep that out of the. The um stormwater retention pond if there's enough water underneath the liquid, the flammable liquid.
Well, again, again, there's got to be a lot of water in there, that's. Unless it's right after a major storm or something like that, um, that pond's usually pretty, pretty empty most of the time, so.
Yep, I built a lot of these ponds that do not ever hold water, which is.
That's correct.
In fact, you have to mow them.
I've designed a lot of them that never hold water.
Are there any other questions? Our action item on this, C J, is the part two. Environmental form?
Yep, that's correct, you've got um partially uh pre-filled. A part two, just as a draft essentially for the board's convenience.
Has everyone gone through part one to make sure that stuff? Although these days with the computers, that's probably fairly. We want to read through all the questions?
Um, but before we get to this, um, are we going to address this issue of um? The protected tanks versus the, uh, the other style of tank? The, the U L one forty-two versus the U L twenty eighty-five? I mean, it seems to me if we're going to err on the side of caution. You may want that U L twenty eighty-five tanks.
Sounded like the proper spatial arrangement. That uh, that was uh, a little over the top if I heard things correctly.
It also sounded like that was an uh D E C or N F P A. Um. D E C inspection item. And I don't know that we can require anything greater than the. Um. Would call for. Is that correct?
Yeah, if, yeah, so if the lead agency, you know, planning board obviously is lead agency and environmental review. Believes that that is a reasonable mitigation um for whatever um impacts we might be evaluating. Um, then yes, of course. And um, you know, I'll. Counsel is here also, so if you'd like to speak, um, attorney for the town can comment further on this, but.
Guy, can we require more than what the um D E C or the inspection agencies responsible for this? Would require in this situation? You're, you're muted.
Um, yeah, I, I, yes, of course you can, there, the state has a lot of minimum standards, whether there are safety standards. Or highway construction standards, uh, how you interconnect to a state highway, for example. And those are what they are, they're minimum compliance standards. Sometimes they're fully representative of uh, you know, best management practices or the most current uh and updated knowledge in the field. And sometimes they're just standards, so. When the state, when, whenever you deal with a, whether it's a, a cleanup for us, you know, petroleum spill site. Or whether it's compliance with um, you know, any number of state regulations, Ag and Markets has them. Department of State has them, D E C has them. Um, the applicant must at least meet the minimum requirements of the state. And there are some exceptions where waiver processes can be approved by the state, such as the Division of Building Codes. Um, but they represent a minimum, if there's a site-specific or particular public safety or other reason for you to have a heightened standard. That's exactly what Seeker wants you to look at, is how do you mitigate a risk? That a one-size-fits-all state standard can't necessarily address. I E, there's a difference between putting this storage tank in the middle of an empty field. On a solid block of granite in Cataragis County and putting it on top of a forty-two story high rise in Manhattan. So yes, of course, you, you can, you can require something more restrictive than the state. But it has to be tied to the, the, the basics of land use review, I E, public safety. Um, mitigating uh and a potential environment negative envi- environmental impact, something like that. It can't just be because you like something better, there has to be a rational enumerated basis for it. Uh, in order to impose it as a condition, nor can it be unreasonably ex- uh, it can't be an unreasonable exaction. In other words, if you recall from the training, the condition may be justifiable under the police power. But it has to bear a reasonable relationship to the harm and it has to be proportional to the harm. In other words, saving one potentially nesting bird doesn't mean you have to give two million dollars to this, to save the Eagles Foundation. So there has to be, you know, it has to tie to the police power and it has to be proportional. But other than that, yes, you can generally exceed state minimum standards unless you're expressly preempted. And I'm not aware that N F P A standards are in fact completely endorsed as statewide regulations. Some are adopted, some are not. Um, not all N F P A standards apply in every single state, they, even the states vary them. Um, but as a, without getting too far into detail, that's my answer.
So I don't believe any of us has the expertise. To try to uh decide whether it's necessary or not. For an upgraded tank or whether the original tanks specified are perfectly um. Compatible with this project, Tim, do, can you give us any help on that?
Yeah, and I, I think this, this, this comes directly from. The fire code that references N F P A thirty that specifically has distance requirements. And it's spatial distance requirements from the loading rack to the tank. And then distances from tank to tank. Because if you have a, and if you have tanks, read it, let's just, let's just make it silly, let's just say there's the, the tanks are six inches apart. If one catches on fire, the other one's going to be exposed too. So the, the purpose of those regulations from a fire protection standpoint, not an environmental standpoint, which is the D E C. E P A, while they help tremendously, they don't address necessarily all the fire and li- fire safety issues. So it's driven from those regulations and the only thing that we're bringing up here is. There's a different way and our last meeting, there was a discussion about a water spray system to, to keep the tanks cool and everything else. There's another way to do it, probably a better way to do that, and that's what we're saying here is one way is to use this protected tank. It's a, you buy the tank that has concrete encasement on the tank. And then you can just basically put these things anyplace and they're. Impact resistant, bullet resistant, and all those other kind of things. But there's another thing that you could do quite simply, and I think we alluded to that in one of our, in that one paragraph in our write-up on part three. If these tanks are being put partially underground because the grade is sloping here. It was understood that there's going to be some kind of a concrete, uh, you know, like a, a barrier wall that. Each of these tanks go into, it could be as simple as raising the height of that poured concrete wall. So it's up above the top of the tank. But when you looked at the tank that was submitted, that was on the site, that's a twelve foot diameter tank. So from wherever it is up to the top, that's twelve feet high, well, if that's twelve feet high. And there's only four or five feet of concrete wall. And I have a fire on the, in the rack area and I'm very close to this, that radiant heat's going to expose the top of that tank. That's not a good thing we want to have, so the, the purpose here is to try to keep. A fire from exposing one of the tanks and there's a number of different ways to do that, you could water spray. We should not rely upon solely on the fire department to do it. And then the other way is that protected tank or you bring up another wall, sort of like a little mini firewall. I don't know what that looks like in this grading plan. When you start looking at the height of that, wherever the bottom of that tank is and what that's going to look like in an elevation side. I can conceptually see it in my mind, but there are potential ways to alleviate the problem. It's not our job to come up with those solutions, but there's a couple of ways that could be done if people were thinking about it. And I thi- I think it's important that this exposure to large flammable and combustible liquid tanks is very important. That's the key to the whole puzzle here.
Does the board feel that uh this is something that you'd like to see on the prints?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Madison? Is there a way that you could show us some sort of mitigation for this problem? Um, either heightened walls or a tank that does it or some sort of spray system? Or anything else you come up with that will mitigate in the same way?
Well, I'll get with Marabato and see what it is they're willing to do. Um, I, I don't know what they, you know, what they want to do at this point as far as changing tanks or anything like that. Um. I, you know, I'll show whatever would be best in the situation, but, but I, I have to know what they want to do. Um, because at this point, what I think they're thinking, what they've submitted is perfectly legal. And in line with uh the town's requirements and with the state's requirements and the E P A requirements. Um, you, you know, even if it doesn't call out exact separations, there's. Plenty of room on the property that, and it can be seen from the site plan to maneuver everything. Um, but you know, we'd be glad to show a little more detail on exactly how those tanks are going to be situated. And what's going to be under them and, and a more of a, a section view that might be of assistance. Uh, but I, I'm not, I don't want to agree that, that they're going to do an upgrade to the tank or anything like that. Without, you know, them knowing what's, what's going on, uh, what you're going to require.
Oh, Mr. De Royer has brought up a couple or three different ways that this could be. This concern of ours could be mitigated. And uh, it would end up being up to you and, and uh, Marabato to. To either meet one of those or find another way. We are certainly open to hearing it, but we do have the safety of the people around. And the firefighters and, and everyone else here to be concerned about. And it sounds like this could be an F P A issue that could flow, flow through the cracks. And some of the, through some of the other departments that might be inspecting it. So I, for one, would like to see something that would, um. That would show us that this, this was mitigated.
Well, I'll be glad to work with Marabato and come up with something for you.
Thank you, kind sir. Any other comments before we, uh, go through the short environmental assessment form?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to know from Marabato when they come back with either a, a solution to the issue. That we think we have or declining to do anything about it. Um, some information about the tanks, some simple things like what's the lifetime of these tanks? Um, of either type and what, what would the cost difference be between the two different types of tanks that we're talking about today?
Okay, thank you very much. Shall we read through part two? The environmental assessment form. Tim, would you like to read them?
So I have a, um, a lot of full scale. Form.
Full environmental assessment form, part two?
Yeah, that's what I have.
Yeah.
I think.
Yep.
I think historically we've read through these question by question to make sure they're answered correctly. Is that correct?
We, we only need to do the, the, the number one, two and three, correct, unless there's a yes. So we don't, we don't need to read every A, B, C, D, E, F, G of every one of them.
Right, correct.
Just the, just the highlighted the topic of each one.
Unless there's a yes.
Correct.
Or unless the board would like to see a yes that was not placed there for whatever reason.
Sure.
Okay, are, are we comfortable that we have enough information to go through this?
Well, we won't know until we get through it. If we have questions about a question. Then we'll be able to, uh, decide or put it off if we need to.
Okay. So I'll, I'll go ahead with, uh, impact on land proposed action may involve construction. And or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site.
I would think the answer to that should be yes.
Yes.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, A, the proposed action may involve construction of land where depth to the water table is less than three feet.
No, no. The ditch is deeper than that.
And it's dry.
Yes.
Yeah. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifteen percent or greater.
No.
The proposed action may involve construction of land where bedrock is exposed. Or generally within five feet of existing ground surface.
That's a possibility.
Yeah, we may see bedrock in the bottom of the ditch, which is probably. More like four feet deep, maybe.
But it would still be a small impact, right?
Okay. D, the proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than one thousand tons of natural material.
Not likely.
The, E, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases.
No.
F, the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. Including from treatment by herbicides.
No.
No, small impact.
Okay. G, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area. Other impacts.
Just probably why the impact ended up as no. It's all the answers were no.
Yeah.
Okay, number two, impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms. On the site. Okay, so then we can skip A, B and C, right?
Right.
Okay, number three, impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. Streams, rivers, ponds or lakes.
No.
Okay. Number four, impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater. Or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer.
Yes.
That is checked, yes.
Okay, fully so.
Right. A, the proposed action may require new water supply wells. Or create additional demand on supplies from existing water supply wells.
No.
Water supply demand from the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity rate. Of a local water supplier aquifer.
No.
The, C, the proposed action may allow or result in residential uses. In areas without water and sewer services.
No.
No. D, the proposed action may include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater.
No.
E, the proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater is. Or suspected to be contaminated.
No.
F, the proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum or chemical products over groundwater or an aquifer.
Yes.
G, the proposed action may involve the commercial application of pesticides within one hundred feet of potable water. Potable drinking water or irrigation sources.
No.
Okay. Number five, impact on.
Oh, quick, wait, quick, excuse me. Once you, once you answer yes, don't you have to expand on that? CJ?
No.
Uh, well, uh, not necessarily immediately. So if there's a yes answer and you'd like to have more information. The planning board could make a statement as lead agency about that. So, um, you can ask the applicant informally for more information as you kind of had. Or, um, alternatively, um, if the, the planning board is, uh, as lead agency is looking for a lot more information. And for some reason not getting it from the applicant, um, you can make a positive declaration of environmental significance. As opposed to a negative declaration, which, um, essentially pushes for further information if you feel like you need it. So that's going to be a very long answer, but, um, we'll make sure that we're documenting, um, the mitigation measures. That are, uh, imposed by the lead agency, planning board as lead agency in a part three of this document.
Okay.
And that one's fairly, fairly straightforward since it is a petroleum storage facility.
Okay, I just, I just thought there was going to be more verbiage needed on yes answers. Okay.
Okay, number five, impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding.
No.
No. Number six, impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source.
No, the, the idea is not to create any emissions.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay, number seven, impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in the loss of flora or fauna.
No.
No.
No. Okay, number eight, impacts on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources.
No. Be nice to have some propane around to dry grain, Wes.
Number nine.
Use the sun.
On aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed actions are obviously different from or in sharp contrast. To current land use patterns between the proposed proj- project and a scenic or aesthetic resource.
No.
No. Next to industrial area.
Yeah.
Not impacting future, right?
Harry's not even here. You didn't.
I know.
Number ten, impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur interadjacent to a historic or archaeological resource.
No.
No. Reporters, no.
Number eleven, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource. As designated in any adopted municipal open space plan.
No.
No.
Number twelve, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area.
No.
Number thirteen, impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems.
Yes, the minimal app access, uh, it's, it's a matter of, uh. Small amount of truck traffic in an area where there's a lot of truck traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're going to say yes for that?
Yeah, I would, but the board can say it.
Well, let's go, let's go, go through A, A through F. Projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network.
No.
No.
The proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for five hundred or more vehicles.
No.
No.
C, the proposed action will degrade existing transit, transit access.
No.
No.
D, the proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations.
No.
No.
E, the proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods.
I think that's a no.
They're already going trucks.
Yeah.
And, uh, we. Uh, get, I just, uh, check that because of the, um, uh, in your package should have been a letter from, or a correspondence from the highway department. Indicating they were going to open another, that other second section of Town Barn Road. So that was kind of the reference.
It's only due to this?
Uh, yes, that's my understanding.
I thought it was going to be a knox box.
Uh, so that's something that we'd have to, um, that's something that the planning board can discuss. Um, that partially is mitigation and then partially is perhaps conversation with, um, highway department about what you prefer. And what they'd prefer.
I remember us having a conversation that was, we were all kind of curious as to why they did away with that access. In with, we all assume it has something to do with traffic on Prueville Road. But it seems to me that regardless of whether this project is there or not. Having two access points to the town barn is a good idea. In other words, I'm not sure that opening that up is only relevant to this project. But it's also relevant to the town barn and the, don't we have another project up behind there and right over there and.
Yeah.
Lot over there. So having two, uh, ways in is probably a good idea no matter what.
Yeah.
So I would say no on that last one.
Well, beyond, beyond the road itself, if you look at the, there is going to be a change in the pattern of movement of, of goods. So whereas before you had a downtown depot and deliveries to southwest. Uh, east, whatever, um, didn't have to go through Lansing. Now that'll be based in Lansing and you'll have a, uh, additional loads of, um, material. Going through the town. So the question is whether you think that's a small impact or a moderate to large impact.
Well, considering the amount of traffic, I would say it's a small impact.
Yep, the number second hour miles in there is going to be a small impact compared to what's already there.
Right. Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree, but so I would say small impact.
Yep, so would I. The board in agreement that that would be.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, number, okay, number fourteen, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy.
Not right there.
Well, those goods are already being provided by them, just a different location in the county.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't see it as any increase or.
Okay. Number fifteen, impact on noise, odor and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors or outdoor lighting.
Well, hopefully not if we can get the lighting straightened out. Yeah.
Has a lot of Town Barn input.
Yeah, I think it would be a small impact as long as you have all dark sky compliant lighting and, and L E D lighting that's tunable.
Yeah, we don't expect them to be running trucks twenty-four hours a day like the, uh, highway department.
I think that the lighting there is more for security purposes than for being able to run trucks in at night. Is that correct?
I need to take that up with the highway superintendent. It seems it could have a cutoff on it and still be secure.
Okay, number sixteen, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants.
No.
No, or certainly a small impact.
God willing, and there's no leaks.
Number seventeen, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans.
No.
No.
This is in the industrial zone, right?
Yes.
Consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character.
Yeah, they're down through.
Yeah.
So shall we go through all these?
May as well.
Here, okay. Uh, A, the proposed action may replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures or areas of historic importance to the community.
No.
No.
B, the proposed action may create a demand for additional community services. I E, schools, police and fire.
Oh, yes, fire.
Fire.
Well, I don't think.
But is it additional?
Million, at least we're designing for that.
Well, it's not additional, right?
Right. I don't see it as buying a new fire truck because of this project.
Correct.
Um, we may require some extra fire training because of this project, but I think that we already have some. Um, this type of fire training going on.
I don't know, do we have any foam equipment available in the town?
Yeah, good question. Does anyone here know?
I'm going to repeat that. Foam equipment?
I'm sure they have foam in, in the fire trucks. So I think we probably ought to check that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get from the, from the fire department as to, um, whether it's a small impact. Or a moderate to large impact on their resources to prepare for, um, you know, the construction of this facility.
Yep, I agree. Could we find that out, CJ? Could we find that out, CJ?
Yeah.
So in the meantime, this is moderate to large impact may occur?
Yeah, we're gonna leave that a yes until we find out.
Okay. C, the proposed action may displace affordable or low-income housing in an area where there is a shortage of such housing.
No.
No. D, the proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources.
No.
E, the proposed action is inconsistent with the predominant architectural scale and character.
No.
F, the proposed action is inconsistent with the character of the existing natural landscape.
No.
Okay, that's.
Very good. Leo, the big question that we have there, now you said there was some information for part three, CJ?
There will be information for part three depending on the direction this board chooses to take with environmental determination, essentially. So I'm assuming that you may want to have the applicants submit some revised plans. It sounds like I'm hearing from some members that there's some desire for full plan sets. I'm hearing some other requests as well. So would you like essentially to give them a chance to go back and make the revisions as requested prior to continuing with environmental review?
Yes, and we'd like to learn a little bit more about the resources of the fire department and how this will impact the resources. I know that we already talked to the fire chief, but we haven't asked that question, I don't think.
Okay, and it sounds like more information from the highway department is recommended or requested relative to the opening of Town Barn Road and what their intention is for that, either to open it fully to the public or whether they want just a security box. Or my understanding is Mike Mosley, deputy highway superintendent, has been conferring with New York State DOT relative to that opening. So we'll just ask for some further information from them.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Morabido people and Tim. We appreciate your input. And I think that until we get more information, we'll make a decision. It'll later take.
Well, thank you all ladies and gentlemen for your time. I hope you guys have a great evening.
Yeah, it looks like it'll be a long one.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'll have a good night, stay safe.
Okay, Tim, CJ may be in touch with you first with asking for some more information, but part of it, God, is I've learned a lot and thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Yes, thanks a lot, that was, that was great.
Bye-bye.
All right, project number, or action item number eight is Key of the Cliffs Minor Subdivision. This is the Finger Lakes Land Trust. We are just declaring lead agency or and doing the state environmental quality review.
That was my understanding was that the board was looking for, after speaking with you, a sketch, Jerry, to try to understand. Okay, yep, so this is more or less equivalent.
Hi, everyone, thanks for having me.
Welcome, Max.
Yes, welcome. Do you, do you have any comments you'd like to make before we get started?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So my name is Max, I'm the director of conservation for the Finger Lakes Land Trust. And this is a project that went before the town board back in 2019, received a unanimous resolution in support. And we've been kind of working our way through it. We received a grant and environmental protection fund parks grant from New York State to help fund the acquisition. And we're here to review it as a minor subdivision. The concept is that the Sims family, William Riley Sims and Jean Lee Sims, would retain 44 acres, that includes their home and barns, and would sell just under 200 acres, 199.5 acres, to the Finger Lakes Land Trust, which would own and manage it as a publicly accessible nature preserve. And then the Sims family would also be granting a conservation easement on all but three acres of the retained parcel. So how nature preserves work for the land trust in terms of short-term plans is once the property is acquired, we then go through a management planning process with a preserve management committee. We then write up a management plan for the property, which includes ecological protection elements, recreational elements. And then after that's complete, the 200-acre parcel A would then be opened to the public. Our preserves are typically all very similar. If you've ever been to one, a parking area, a sign, and a walking path is what you can expect to eventually see on parcel A. And parcel B would be unchanged for the Sims family. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
So Max, you've got ingress egress from two different areas, from Route 34, and also, what's the street down here, is it Beckwith?
Fiddler's Ridge, yes. So. So the parcel B, the retained parcel, would only have access on 34B Ridge Road. And then parcel A, that would become Finger Lakes Land Trust's property, would have two access points, 34B Ridge Road and Fiddler's Ridge. The, the idea though not finalized is that the main parking area and access point would be on 34B Ridge Road.
Part of the scenic byway.
Oh damn.
Would this parcel have access all the way down to the lake?
So, not quite, it's really steep. The, the, you know, proposed walking path would likely, would stay along the ridges. And do, mostly due to the fact that it's really steep. And then there's also the railroad tracks down at the, in between the property and the lake shore. So the public access would be basically taking you through fields, then into a very nice mature forest with some, with views then of the lake and of some really nice waterfall cliffs as well.
There's a, there's a point on the lake, is that included or is that separate?
That, so it is, it's a bit complicated from a, from a title perspective. So the, the point, the riparian rights, you'll see a note in the subdivision plat, the riparian rights are retained by Sims and will be purchased by the Finger Lakes Land Trust. So in, in terms of the title, riparian rights come with the property that's adjacent and to the east of the railroad tracks. But due to the railroad tracks, in practice, in practice, the Sims family hasn't really been utilizing it and, and the railroad has been leasing it out to various folks and such. So it won't, it won't really be a short-term part of the preserve.
So that cabin and the, the cabin and the point is not included in this?
No.
Okay.
As I understand it too, one cannot cross the tracks without explicit approval.
Yeah, and so that's why there won't, there is no plans for any public trail that'll, that'll go to the lake for this preserve.
And question on, why do you have different zones for parcel B?
Yeah, so that, thanks for asking. So that is for the conservation easement. So basically, one of the zones is a residential zone and one of the zones is an agricultural field management zone. And so when, when we have a conservation easement on a property, there'll be permissible uses that are more strict or less strict based on that zone. So there's no forest management zone in this specific easement, but oftentimes our easements are divided into a residential area, a farming area, a for, a working forest area, and then sometimes a, you know, forever wild buffer area next to a creek. In this case, there's two zones, a residential zone and an agricultural field management zone.
Right. So, so zone D looks like that's, the intention is for a future lot there possibly?
It's, it's to provide, it is to provide some flexibility for the landowners in the future. So it'll have, won't have impact on the preserve. And so there's three acres being left out of the easement to provide some more flexibility.
So that's, that's not part of our, our understanding today as far as a subdivision of that at all?
No.
That's down the road, okay.
So Max, can you tell us a little bit about what the current use is of this lot?
Sure, so it's, it is 244 acres. It's a very special property, currently all enjoyed by the Sims family. They live in a 19th century Greek revival old farm home and have a bunch of restored barns on the property and then enjoy it recreationally. Plenty of local Lansing folks have also enjoyed this property from, from what we've heard. And so, you know, it was in CRP Conservation Reserve Program. Mr. Sims has mowed the fields and kept them as, as basically grassland habitat in many cases up, up in the eastern parts of the property. And then the western part of the property is very mature forests and, you know, 250-year-old white oak trees, beautiful mature woods, and then steep hillsides, two relatively big gorges with two creeks running down, and then a third creek at the northern boundary as well. But there's no, besides the, the house and the barns on parcel B, the retained parcel, there's no other structures, there's no structures on parcel A, nor are there any structures planned.
Was, was the state grant adequate enough to pay for this?
No, the, the parks EPF grant is a 50%.
50%? Okay.
Have you raised the rest?
We're still, we're still in the middle of fundraising, but, but our, our fundraising team is doing a good job. We've, we've put out some, some materials on our website that has helped and we're, we're on our way to where we need to be, definitely.
Did the, did the county contribute at all to this?
Uh, not, no, I don't believe so. I could, I could confirm, but.
Yeah, conservation funding, yeah, for the capital.
Okay, thank you, thanks CJ.
Al, you ought to give and pay the rest of it off.
Any other questions for Max? I think at this point, we just, we have a resolution before us that would declare ourselves lead agency. Do I hear a motion to?
Don't move.
Heather, do you want to call the roll?
Okay. See, Sandy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes.
Sorry, it's bedtime.
That's just how I feel.
Okay, so we've declared lead agency, yeah, go ahead CJ.
I just have a quick question for Max relative to the visit. So fire and code went out for a visit relative to that culvert? So I was just wondering kind of what the intention was there?
Yeah, so I was on site with Mr. Sims and a contractor last week. And so we, we actually received a bid from a contractor for the culvert replacement on Friday. So that's where we're at with that.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
We will, I'm sure, see you in the future. And next is Lake Forest.
Well, well.
Relative to the visit, so.
This is an update. We're doing the second part two again. Always, any resolutions here, right?
Nope, no resolutions, there may be some updates from applicants.
Lloyd, would you like to, do you have any comments you'd like to make to update us on the project?
Um, I think that not much has changed. I believe that Tim has been in communication with, with Don D regarding the drawings. He might want to comment on that. Don't think.
I didn't see over there.
There's Tim.
Tim, you. I've been in touch with Don D. Also, I reviewed the draft of the, you, part two of the EAF. And I have a couple of comments on that, but we can get into that if that's what you're gonna do tonight, so.
I think it is, did everyone go through part one? And have we found any discrepancies or changes or amendments?
There's a little bit of issue with the application dates relative to section B, government approvals. They're just a long time ago, so. But. Okay, well, I guess if they.
A long time ago that this was filled out, is that what you're saying, CJ?
Um, I guess what I'm saying is the application to Town of Lansing Planning Board, I don't believe is July 2013. So those dates, a couple of them were, I think, updated, but.
It was the original one.
But we did a new application?
That's correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
So do we have a new application date?
I think we did everything you asked for, CJ, new application, new EAF, so. So new application date must be sometime in 2021?
Yeah, I believe it was in February.
Yeah.
I don't have an application in front of me, so CJ, are you, you have an application that shows?
24 or 21? It's on, it's on the planning board website.
I was just mentioning that the dates are. I was just mentioning that the dates are not some currents, that's all, no.
But we do have an application for two twenty-four, twenty-one, is that correct?
I believe so. I think that's when we completed, we received a completed application, but I can look at the original resolution.
Okay. All right, do we want to, so you don't really have anything new, but we want to go through the uh, part two of the environmental assessment form? Is that correct? Is that our action item tonight CJ? And we want to bring up that evidently you've had someone go through and check the uh, the planting. Was this recent? No, this is from twenty thirteen.
That's correct. Yeah, an expert was uh, contracted to do that. He he's filled out a report, which I believe is is uh, at near the end of this uh, recent document that was posted on the on the town website.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went ahead and assumed that applicants would like to use the previous materials since it seemed to uh, you know, uh, meet some requirements of the application. So I just went ahead and included it, but of course, if you'd like to use new submittals, then there's no reason why.
I can't think of anything that would have changed over the years. All right, we want to go through part two.
Yeah.
Dean, would you like to read this one?
Sure.
Don't sound so enthusiastic.
I'm just scrolling back here. Okay, so the full EAF, uh, question number one, impact on land, proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site.
Yes.
So, question A, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet.
Not likely.
So that would be no. B, the proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifteen percent or greater. Try and understand is the case here.
One comment on that, folks. I went through the project maps and uh, the actual where we're doing the construction with the road and the houses and everything else averages twelve to thirteen percent. The only place that's over fifteen percent is in the actual gorges and the cliff area along the lake, and we're not disturbing that, so. Just a clarification.
So that we could answer that now?
We can, yeah.
It would be small impact.
But we can answer, or small impact.
Yeah, I agree.
So item C, the proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface.
Possible?
Yeah.
I would say probable.
But it's still gonna be probably small impact, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if there would be any impact on the project.
Right. D, the proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than one thousand tons of natural material.
No.
No.
E, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases.
Yes.
Yes, this is a multi-phase development.
Now, does they have a large impact on the project? I would say it probably does.
I would offer one comment here that um, as part of the erosion and stretching it out, we are doing the detailed SWIP, which has to be approved by the uh, Stormwater Officer and the DEC, so I don't feel it's a large impact because we're mitigating it with all the features we have to build to control runoff and erosion, so.
That makes sense.
So is everyone comfortable with this all impact there?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So item half, the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. I think we just discussed that would be a small impact.
Yep.
Uh, item G, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area.
No.
So, so would we change the impact on land there to no? Did we?
We can.
That no or small impact.
Mitigated, yes.
Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
So you could uh, just uh, as a note, you can leave it as yes, but then just uh, in the part three, we can just explain the mitigation. It's whatever you prefer.
Okay, that would probably be the best way to do it.
Item number two, impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Example cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, caves.
Well, the three, the three boxes are checked no, but the top, it's checked yes.
Yeah, I think that's a no because they're not additionally inhibiting accents. There's already no access.
So are we okay with no on that?
Yep, I am.
The U N A is just on the cliffs, is that correct? Or they're not building anywhere?
It it does go up a little past above the cliffs, but uh, we're not really impacting anything there.
All right, I think that could be a no.
Uh, item three, impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, streams, ponds, or lakes.
This marked yes.
Which I'm assuming is in response to streams that are flowing into the lake or stormwater into the lake.
Which is mitigated.
Yeah.
So again, would that be something that we can mark yes and then explain the mitigation procedures in part three?
Yeah, absolutely.
So. Item A, our proposed action may create a new water body, to be no. Item B, the proposed action may result in an increase or decrease over ten percent or more than a ten acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any body of water.
No.
No. See, the proposed action may involve dredging more than one hundred cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body.
No.
E, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the bed or banks of any other water body.
No.
Uh, E, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body, body either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments.
Yeah, do it at the end, you know.
Uh, F, the proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal of water from surface water.
No.
No.
Oh, now going back to E, do we want to make that a yes and we'll discuss it in the part three?
I think it's a small impact.
Okay, good. I'm in agreement there. I just wanted to make sure the rest of the board was in agreement.
Uh, H, the proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies.
We sure hope not.
Well, the answer is, it may, but that's, we are mitigating that.
Yeah, that's what the SWIP does and all our practices do, is eliminate that.
Yeah.
Or at least reduce it to acceptable. Uh, I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action.
That's yes, but it's mitigated.
J, the proposed uh, action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any body, a water body.
No.
K, the proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities.
No.
Item four, impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or in aquifer.
I don't see why that's a yes.
Yeah. Because of the septic systems is what the, they were looking at, but. That's uh, what is it, number D down there? But again, it's.
Yeah, I would say no. I mean, the the health department's gonna design something and you're gonna implement it.
Right. I'd say no on, on four.
Yeah.
Okay.
C, but C, it's not answered. And the proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water or sewer services would certainly be a yes.
If there's water there.
But no sources.
But it says M.
Right, so there's no sewer services other than septic system.
Septic systems, right.
I think that should be a yes on C. Not sure that D then needs to be a yes, but um, that would again, is mitigated by the septic system. And in part three, we would inform that.
Um, do you have city water down there?
Yeah.
Yes, it's proposed, yep.
All right, number. Let's see, number five, impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding.
No.
To flood that property.
Yeah, gotta be a big flood for that one. Number six, impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source.
No.
Number seven, impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna.
Not really.
Well, there was a letter that came in our packet about.
Bindweed, whoever wants to protect bindweed. I think from the sites though, most of those um, concerned species are on the steepest slopes or toward the gorge.
Yep, that's what I was reading, that the, all of the, the um, locally or whatever the words were there for the um, fauna were on the slopes and not up in the fields.
Yeah.
So that would be, yes, but mitigated. Um, proposed action may result in a reduced or degradation of any habitat used by any rare or endangered species.
I think that the first number eight could be a small impact since we're not really doing any construction in the areas where those, the fauna occurs.
I agree.
Okay, so we're gonna change number seven to no.
Yep. I mean, if the board is in agreement.
Well, let's see, there's some other items down below.
Well, let's read through them.
Okay. Um, so I just read through number B or letter B, degradation, and we said no or small impact. Letter C, the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation need is listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on over or near the site.
No.
No.
Uh, D, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern and conservation need is listed by New York State or the federal government.
No.
No. Uh, E, the proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to protect.
No.
Nope.
No. F, the proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community.
I'd say no.
Right. Because all of that, I think, happened in the um, in the slopes that where this project is not going to be.
So we should change F from yes to no.
Right.
E, the proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site.
It won't affect the deer at all.
Give them a nice warm place to lay down next to the house.
No plantings to eat?
Herbiverties to eat for the winter, so.
Uh, H, the proposed action requires the conversion of more than ten acres of forest, grassland or any other regionally or locally important habitat.
It's all second growth forest.
And the grassland that's there, if Google Earth is correct, there's some grassland there. But I don't know that it's regionally or locally important habitat for anything.
I agree.
Yeah.
I think one could be a no or small impact.
Right. Uh, I, proposed action, commercial, industrial, or recreational projects only. So this does not apply, so that'd be a no. And J, other impacts. So, we've turned number seven into a no, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Number eight, impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources.
Nope.
Anybody's doing any planting there?
Uh, number nine. Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource.
No.
No.
Number ten, impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or ar- archaeological resource.
Archaeological must be the cliffs?
No, I can, uh, I did the original thing on the EAF, if you look at the end of it, the EAF mapper.
Uh huh.
It says there's no archaeology sites near or the area. But way back when, uh, I was asked by TG Miller to contact shippo and there was some confusion over where the project was and how big the project was. And uh, so they they listed, they wanted to see further action before they would sign off on it. So what we did with the recent mapper shows that there's nothing nearby, especially of the historic nature, but uh, but also with the archaeology. So uh, we looked at it as it's not really listed on the EAF mapper and therefore it's not a significant thing. That said, I still am gonna attempt to get a uh, 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 no impact letter from the shippo. But I I think um, it 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 should happen because we're not disturbing the sensitive areas that are the creek beds and down along the shore. Everything we're doing is up on top, but I don't have that yet.
Well, we would love to see the letter, but I think we could change this to no or small impact.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, item number eleven, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction in an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan.
No.
No.
Number twelve, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area.
No.
Number thirteen, impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems.
Why is that yes?
Yeah.
It's added development, but it's yes, but.
But it's a small impact.
Funny room on the road.
Yeah, should be no.
It should be no there.
Number 14, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy.
Small.
Small impact.
Number 15. Impact on noise, odor, and light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting.
Small impact.
All impact.
Small impact.
Yeah.
Impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants.
No.
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 Number 17, consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans.
Hmm, oh, no.
Not consistent.
It is consistent.
Correct.
Yeah.
Or no, it is not consistent.
Right.
Double negatives.
Yep. Uh, number 18, consistency with community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character.
Does that mean the same thing as not consistent?
They're just going to bring in characters.
No.
No, no.
That's the end of that.
Was that our only action item there CJ?
Uh, yep, then then this way, if there's uh, any questions you have for the applicants, um, to be able to do any further environmental review, this is an opportunity.
It sounds like Tim, you're just waiting for the shippo letter.
Yep, that's it.
Do you expect that soon?
Yeah, it usually takes two or three weeks to get it. Um, I'm still trying to argue. In fact, I talked to the DEC late last week. Uh, they're going to give me the actual chapter and verse of why it's required because usually what happens when it shows up on the EF mapper as a non-conflict. It's not required to submit, but they're asking people to do it because sometimes they think the EF mapper is not accurate. So we're trying to get an actual decision on that from them. And I'll have a letter from the DEC whether we got to go through this or not, so. So it's up in the air at this point.
Sounds like some local agencies who don't trust their own records.
Yeah, that's that's pretty much it.
Don't drop any cigarettes, poker chips.
Are you planning any outside lights, um, any external lighting for the development?
The roads?
No, we hadn't. Um, it might be one up at the first intersection up on top, but we haven't shown a a plan yet. Uh, we're we're trying to keep it low key.
Good. I don't want to be disturbed at night.
Yeah.
Everybody honk their horn when they go by Deb's place.
Yeah, go down there and turn around a lot.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, Tim and Floyd.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks.
And hopefully we'll get the shippo letter and we will continue apace.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Thanks.
Is Muts and Tires next on the list?
Yes.
And here we need a neck deck and preliminary and final site plan review. Are they in the uh, are they here tonight or?
Uh, yes, I could admit them if you'd like.
I think you gave us a lot of information last time.
Yeah.
This meeting before the power cut out.
Uh, well, he is here if you'd like to hear from him.
Yep, you can certainly bring him in. Hello, Mitch.
Hey, how?
You have any new information for us or? I can't remember what questions we might have come up with before, something to do with the plantings along the road.
Yeah, the plantings were there all the same. Going to be some five crab apple trees out by the front, get some blockage. We're going to do there was little design for around the sign. Um, besides that, no, no, no changes at all.
This time of year, the crab apples are pretty.
Mm hmm. That's what we're going for. Hopefully a nice bloom to start and maybe block some of the ugliness.
And wheat juicy apples, so we end up with crab apple jelly.
Ooh. Well, come steal some if you'd like, Jerry.
Any other, does anyone have any questions for for Mitch? I think we went through this pretty good and it's fairly straightforward. Would we like to uh? Have we read the resolution for a night deck?
We've got the leg deck and the site plan and preliminary and site plan approval all in one.
Yep.
They all look good.
Or do we want to do the short uh, assessment form first?
Oh, yeah.
I'll read this one because it looks pretty short. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No. No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of the land?
Small impact.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a CEA, critical environmental area?
No.
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 Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable available reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies?
No.
Nope.
Like private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? For example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Just do that one. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No. Small impact.
Small impact.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
Have we all read the resolution?
Yep.
Is there any discussion regarding the terms of it?
Is there a new sign? Yeah.
Is there a new sign, Jerry? No, it's the same sign.
You getting a new sign up there?
No, that's not not currently. We're just gonna do like a 10-foot radius of mulch and put some arranged flot like brennials in there just to give it a little spiced up look.
So we have and a sign being being issued to you, but we don't really need that in there. But I assume that CJ put it there just to cover ourselves.
So which condition was that? I'm sorry.
The sun.
Yes, uh, in case the there was a desire to replace the sign.
Ah, future.
To he, yep.
And maybe this question was already answered, but how tall are the trees?
How tall are they going to be?
Yeah, when you plant them.
Nice plant, uh, we're getting them from either the gaggle or the plantsman. I assume they're five feet, five to seven feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, is there, there's not anyone across the road you need to screen your building from, is there?
That's even worse.
Seems like a leading question.
All right, um. Can I hear a motion? No. We need to vote on this.
I move the resolution.
Second all of it.
And Heather, do you want to read the uh, the role?
Yep, uh, Sandy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And Jerry?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mitch.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yeah, we continue to grow and expand.
We're trying. We'll see how it goes.
All right.
Seriously.
And next on the agenda is uh um Buck Road?
Yeah.
And is, is it Steve?
Um, it is, uh, Scott is the applicant, but um, he has, uh, I believe George Boyhouse is uh, representing him on the following three projects, so I can admit him.
Busy guy.
Yeah.
CJ, while while he's coming in, the uh, resolution says it's going to be a multiple family dwelling. Is that a typo?
Uh, you know, it's it's kind of funny because uh, maybe I got it wrong in the heading, but um, the definition of multiple family dwelling in the land use ordinance uh, is defined on the number of units, however many uh, are greater than, I think it's three on a single lot. So that's how this ends up, a single family dwelling ends up being uh, considered multi-family. Yeah, so.
Because the other units are already there.
Exactly, and I I certainly suggested the applicant, I said, well, you know, you could subdivide the parcel and you know, have them on an individual lot and it wouldn't be subject to any site planning, but um, I think he didn't want to do that for whatever reason, so uh, here we are.
I've I've got a question regarding the three that I noticed. I didn't see much on stormwater on the next three projects. Does stormwater come into uh, effect on these?
On, well, we'll take them one at a time. Are you talking about this one?
Yeah, this one and the next two. I didn't see anything about stormwater, so my question is, you know, sh- should we uh, should that, should that be brought up and discussed on these?
George is here, although his name bets at the moment. I'm sure that he has an answer for you.
Okay, good.
A acre disturbance?
Did you hear him, George?
Yeah, could.
Next question again.
George, on stormwater on the next three projects, this one and the next two?
Okay.
Does that come into play on these?
I'm still Beth, but I'm I've got my wife's. Can you guys hear me?
Every now and then.
Okay, because there's something, I mean, because it, like, people are talking over people. Before it was like, you pick one person, you see who's talking. Now everybody's talking, I don't. Okay. So let's, let's start with.
Buck Road.
What the heck is going on? Okay.
You don't have the uh, the YouTube playing in the background or anything, do you?
Uh, Jerry, right now, I'm on about a minute delay.
And are, and you're not on YouTube?
Oh, that's, okay, just a minute. Let me get rid of that.
Does it every time?
Okay. Now can you, whoops.
Is that better? Now you've muted yourself.
Let me unmute. Now can you hear me?
Much better.
Okay. Okay, because it was like, okay, so they asked, answered questions. The first one, there's three here, two don't really have anything to do with stormwater. The third project has stormwater. We'll get to that when we get to number uh, 12, but on number 10 or number 11, I'm sorry, 13 will be the ones that has stormwater. On 11, Scott built two duplexes on the site. There's still land left. Right, the right one. Nope, I'll take it.
Yeah, and Buck Road?
Okay, on Buck Road. So basically, he's looking to to add perhaps for himself a single family house and a garage that he'll use.
Is this the same land that he just recently um, put um, duplexes on? And I thought if it is the same land, I thought that he can no longer build anything else on that land if I recall a couple of years ago when we had.
I think, I think that's why he's asking to modify the previous. But he can only build a single family house. He doesn't have enough space to build another duplex.
But he just has enough space to build a single family dwelling?
Yes. Based on 40,000 square feet.
Was there a contingency for no further development?
Material?
Not that I'm aware of.
CJ, do you know the answer to that?
Um, I'm looking at resolution 16 dash 20 right now. And uh, I'm not seeing any conditions that would foreclose future development. It just says resolution approving site plan and issuing site plan approval for construction of two duplexes, Buck Road. Resolution 16 dash 20.
For some reason, it's sticking in my head that that was the end of it, that he could not build anything more on that parcel of land, but I could be wrong.
That was the case out on Prueville Road?
Yes.
Well, showing.
We used up all the space on the acreage out there next to where he's got the the um the uh, storage, stone storage and stuff.
Construction yard.
Yep. I think he used up all that space, but I don't remember this one.
Anything in the mess? Or would that be in the resolution?
Would you have to be in the resolution, I think? And if it's not there, then it probably isn't.
I'm not seeing anything uh, but relative to the stormwater question, um, applicant did submit ground disturbance form and it does say on resolution PB 16 dash 20 that it was point eight four acres of disturbed area for the duplexes, but perhaps there was some reclamation of some of that disturbance, so.
Okay, in my discussions with Scott, so you've got 5.46 acres. And you run the numbers and he needs 80,000 per duplex, 160,000, so leftover, there's like 77,837 square feet by the numbers I just ran. And so that won't support another duplex.
And he couldn't build it at the time or it would have been over an acre disturbance and he'd have had to do stormwater. And he couldn't build it at the time, or it would have been over an acre disturbance and he'd had to do stormwater.
Uh, I don't think so, because isn't it two acres? For a single family house, you got a two acre disturbance.
But single family and rental units.
I, I think if you add the, the two rental units and the single family and the barn, that's going to disturb too much land.
The common plan of development, right? Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, this was referred to town stormwater engineer, so. I don't recall a specific comment about it, but I can look in my notes.
I mean, if we did that, are we going to do it for the whole site or just for the house?
I think the requirements for the whole site. But I would have to depend on CJ for, for extra piece on this.
Yeah, I don't see any comments relative to stormwater for this project. I'm not sure that if it's been long, I, I don't know if it has something to do with time, but I don't have anything listed here and I don't have any follow-up comments from Donnie relative to this. So I could be missing something, but.
It seemed to me, and I could be wrong, that we had a, we tried to set up a ruling or a rule for those times in which somebody developed partially a project that came to just below the stormwater regulate requirements, and then came back within a specified period of time or specific period of time and finished the project in effect. And again, it was below the necessary requirements, but together the two of them added up to stormwater. And of course, stormwater is what we're trying to protect you.
Guy, can you shed any light on that, Guy?
Unmute.
Well, yeah, I did. The, the, I'd have to look at the actual stormwater code, but my recollection is as follows. It applies to whenever you trigger one of the thresholds, or if you are expanding an existing project that wasn't previously subject to review, and that puts you into a threshold. So if you had, if you had done, let's say, a, a project where the, a prior subdivision had been two lots and then you add four more lots to it, you're going to cross that, that threshold for residential, because each residential lot is presumptively a minimum of about a half an acre of disturbance, though in individual cases it can be less, and in many cases it can be more. So the idea is not to allow a fifty lot subdivision, two lots at a time, so as to say, no one action creates stormwater, but you look at the cumulative impact over time of multiple or phased subdivisions to make that determination. So if you want me to pull up that code, I can, I can look at it right now and read it to you and you can decide how it applies.
Yeah, because we've got the crick running by behind this project.
All right, let me pull it up.
And I think that it would be a good idea to make sure that anything there is mitigated, although there's some wooded area before you get to the crick. It runs fairly close.
Okay, I'm, I'm pulling up chapter two twenty-five, Stormwater. Two twenty-five four. That's applicability. Let me make sure I'm on the TMDL. Find the right section. Oh, that's illicit discharge. Okay, yeah, there's two, it's article two of that, so sorry about that.
Sorry to put you on the spot here.
That's okay, that's okay. I mean, you're talking about an application I'm not really all that familiar with, but subdivision, two twenty-five dash twenty-six C, all land development activities, subject to review or approval by the planning board under subdivision site plan, PDA and special permit shall be reviewed. Exemptions include ag activities. I don't think we're dealing with an exemption with subdivision. This has to do with how you define a land development activity. Uh, where's the A, B, and C? Oh. Land development activities that meet any of conditions A, B, or C shall include water quality and water quality controls, i.e. post-construction stormwater management practices. A, land development activities discharging a pollutant concern to an impaired water or TMDL designated watershed for which pollutants and stormwater runoff have been identified as a source causing the condition of the impaired waters. In case you don't know, all of Southern Basin and Kugel Lakes are TMDL. Condition B, stormwater runoff or erosion or sediment occurring from land development activities, land development activities disturbing five or more acres. Condition C, land development activities disturbing between one and five acres of land exclusive of, of the construction of single family residences that result in the disturbance of less than two acres. So if you have a, a series of connected land development activities that cross the two acre threshold, even if it's for single family residences, i.e. subdivisions, then it would trigger some level of stormwater review. Whether it requires a basic SWIP or a full SWIP would be what your stormwater people would get into.
So it sounds like, since it's a single family house, that would have a two acre disturbance limit. Obviously, the double duplexes had a one acre disturbance limit. That wasn't exceeded when originally done. And so the question is, what is the limit? Because I think combined, he's probably still not at two acres.
Oh, by the time you get the barns in there and the garage and the house?
And driveway.
And the driveway.
But the driveway. I don't know.
Okay, well, definitionally, a land development activity is any construction or other activity, including but not limited to clearing, grading, excavating, soil disturbance, the placement of fill, or construction or placement of site impervious surfaces that result in a land disturbance of A, equal to or greater than one acre, or B, less than one acre but part of a larger common plan of development or sale, even though multiple separate and distinct land development activities maybe are phased or occur on the land at different times and or upon separate schedules, or C, less than one acre but part of a prior project not previously subject to this article. So arguing about, perhaps, are, you know, debating what is and what is not a land development activity isn't the relative issue. The relevant issue is not necessarily what is a land development activity. It's how much site disturbance is there in relation to residential development? And again, a, a single family home generally, and that means one or like a single family home with a, with a, you know, a standard footprint. It can be one and two family homes. It can be a single family home with a mother-in-law apartment built in, i.e. not a standalone separate building. The presumption tends to be, at least for most of the stormwater people I've worked with, that each single family home with an average driveway, an average-sized yard and an average-sized foundation, you know, one to four bedroom type thing, is going to be about a half an acre of disturbance. Certainly, if this is close to what might be the threshold, you know, the, the applicant, as well as the town's stormwater engineer or SMO can measure the disturbance to see if it triggers one of these standards, and if so, which one. But land development activity was defined in a way to specifically prevent somebody from doing a little bit at a time, a little bit at a time, or from adding on to a prior sub, a prior project that hadn't been reviewed, because the intent was mainly because of the DEC and EPA Phase II requirements, to start to make sure that this stuff applies to all projects, all new projects, all projects that were previously approved, but are going through another level of development or some new activity. So the law is really triggered on land disturbance. So if there's a debate as to how much land is being disturbed, my recommendation would be do the calculation and then figure out what's required.
As far as the calculations concerned, do we include the disturbance from the two buildings that have previously been built on there? And I think that we need to. But I am more than willing to have it open for discussion.
Yeah, I would, I mean, technically that would turn on what your SMO determines, but the two acre threshold, you know, you have a land development activity definition that says you can disturb one, less than one acre, but if it's prior, if, if it's part of a prior project not previously subject to stormwater review, then it might still trigger. So it, the prior project may not necessarily count in all of the acreage, but the numbers change if you have prior disturbance. I don't know if you follow that, but you'd have to look at the definition in two twenty-five dash twenty-two of what is a land development activity? And ultimately, ultimately, you know, if it, if it doesn't, if it doesn't meet the definition, if it doesn't cross the threshold, i.e., you know, two acres of, of new disturbance or one acre where there's, where you're expanding a prior activity that wasn't subject to review, then you probably wouldn't have a separate stormwater requirement for this particular land development activity. But, you know, I, I would let the stormwater management officer make that call. That's, that's their job to figure out, you know, what happens when you get into these little gray nooks and crannies.
Yeah, I agree with Guy. I mean, I think Scott originally was going to do two duplexes and he sees he's got land that he could use for a single family house. That wasn't his original plan. So now the question is, especially if he's considering it for his house. You know, Donnie will probably give us whatever the limits are and we can do the calculation.
Yeah, if, if your actual calculations, or the actual disturbance was point four eight four acres before, and if the.
You're going to have a half over. You're going to exceed the one.
You're going to exceed the one, but the two comes into play here at some point, and I'm not sure where, where or when.
Right.
Right on to that. Sorry, I didn't get that out there, George, but, but yeah, that, it might still trigger some stormwater need, but to me, the, the threshold question is whether it triggers, you know, construction, basic activities, or whether it triggers some sort of long-term permanent practices. And that's really the threshold that I think is in concern, because I don't think anyone would dispute that building a home doesn't require some stormwater practices, whether it's silt fencing and reseeding soil once it's, it's placed. So I, I think the question is, it may be triggered at the one acre threshold because of prior projects, but does it require quote unquote, a full SWIP with permanent practices? I think the review would be triggered, but not necessarily the post-construction permanent practices. And again, how that all plays out based on the calculations of disturbance. I, I would let George and, and, and Donnie and Lynn do the calculations and then apply the law.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
They're the knowledgeable ones. We could just.
I hope so, maybe.
Well, George, did that make sense to you that you would have that discussion?
That makes sense, because if it was truly, if, if he subdivided the lot and put a single family house on it, there'd be no question. There would be no practices other than the temporary ones you do with self fence and grading and all that. There wouldn't be any permanent structures. Talking to Scott, the way it grades right now, there is some stuff, he could do some work, because it, it doesn't drain to the creek. There's a swell that all the stuff coming off of two duplexes drain anyway, so. It's just a matter of how we catch it, what we have to do, and what the limit's going to be. So it sounds like I need, Scott and I need to talk to Donnie and just run this by him and see what he says.
Yeah, I think that's.
Keep Lynn informed.
Yep. Okay, the next one.
Well, we have some work to do on this one yet.
But if, if Donnie says that we, whatever the number is, then I tell you, we just come back and say, here's the number and get the approval.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with the stormwater management officer and the, and the town stormwater engineer. I don't have specific notes from this, but I think I recall something about common plan of development, but like I said, I'm happy to check in with the SMO and uh, stormwater engineer about this, so.
So do we vote on this resolution, CJ?
Um, given the concerns relative to the stormwater, I thought that we had addressed those in project review committee, but evidently we have not. So I would just ask you then to just table the resolution until we come to a resolution relative to the stormwater.
That sounds good. Do we want to move on to this one?
Okay, so the next one. So what Scott's looking at doing, the stormwater that exists there for the five, the five original duplexes actually was a, Scott was telling me, what is it, Ellen Yon, or whoever the head of this DEC stormwater up in Syracuse, she actually did an onsite seminar to show people how to do stormwater using this job. So there is stormwater there. The, all around his yard and stuff, it's all gravel. So where the proposed forty by sixty, the proposed thirty-two by twenty-four, and the proposed fifty by eighty, they're all currently on impermeable surface. The original shop was built prior to stormwater rigs. The five duplexes have stormwater and the proposed thirty-two by twenty-four garbage building, which is basically, he just wants to cover his dumpsters. That's already draining into the stormwater. And then in the back, the proposed forty by sixty, that's going to be, now that he's becoming a landlord, he needs storage room because of the prices of materials. He'd like to, when they get cheaper, he'd like to be able to have some, so he can put them away and warehouse them. But that's on a gravel lot. So Scott's position is, I'm trading one impermeable for another impermeable. It's all impermeable now. The only thing we could do, oh, that's the position now, the proposed fifty by eighty, since that was on a grandfather thing, it technically could drain gutters to a, to a rain garden out front, but there's, you know, we're not adding any more impermeable surface to what's already there.
You're saying it's blacktop currently?
Blacktop and gravel, gravel compared to gravel, which will be, you know, if you talk to Sherobbe Walker, they're saying that's impermeable.
But we are just at this point going to declare ourselves lead agent, lead agencies.
Yeah.
I believe that's what's on the, I believe that's what's on the agenda, yes.
Yeah, I think that we're not really, we don't really have to get into that tonight. So we, because we don't have that resolution before us until the next meeting, I assume. But we can declare ourselves a lead agency on this. And I think what you just explained it, sounds to me like it's barely cut and dried.
My question is, since you're going to come, you'll come back and hopefully get approval in the main meeting, is there anything we need to submit by the thirtieth for the main meeting?
Well, looking at the site plan, you're talking about three buildings, thirty-two by twenty-four, fifty by eighty, and then.
Three whole manor structures, yes.
I, I don't see the other building on here. It's really hard to read the, the site plan.
It's where the proposed forty by sixty is deemed, go to the right. There's a one that's hatched and there's an arrow down, proposed thirty-two by twenty-four garage building or.
I see the thirty-two by twenty-four.
Okay, and then the fifty by eighty is, what, west of the shop?
I see the fifty by eighty.
Okay, and the forty by sixty is east of the easternmost duplex, where it says existing parking lot.
Awful hard to read. Awful hard to read.
It's a little tiny thing, Dean. It's right where people could dump their garbage.
No, I see duplex, 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 duplex.
Forty by sixty foot. Right at the edge of the parking lot.
I don't know, I must be blind. Everything looks like a blur on here. Other than the, the four, four duplexes, thirty-two by twenty-four, fifty by eighty.
So I assumed, yeah, to Dean's point, I assumed that we'd be getting like a site plan, like, yeah, maybe more than just.
I mean, I see it, I see it on the, uh, the paperwork where it says construct a forty by sixty, but I just, I can't see it on the site plan.
That's a minute interpretation of what Dean's asking CJ. We need a big site plan.
Yeah, and if we could also get some elevations and maybe utilities planned. Yeah, landscaping and then any kind of, um, uh, just. Uh, landscaping and then also, um, uh, you know, a circulation. Just that can all be on a main sheet. But it'd be great to kind of see those things come together, the landscaping, the circulation on the site. And then the actual disposition of the buildings as proposed.
And, and you said the lighting as well, outdoor lighting?
Well, I think particularly for the garbage building.
Well, garbage would be inside.
They're gonna walk up there into the dark.
No, you'd have lights on inside of the building.
Can you show us that on, on a paper?
When we get the big one.
I'll have to ask Scott if I can get, I mean, he's basically sketched this on a photo reduction of his survey.
I can tell. It's just, it's not very clear.
Like the back of an envelope, kind of drawing.
Or a napkin. But while we're waiting, I would, I would move to accept the resolution as lead agency.
Second.
And Heather, would you like to read the roll?
Yep, Sandy.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
And Jerry.
Yes. All right, George, the next one, Huga Vista Drive. This one looks like it's gonna require some stormwater.
Yeah, I don't. Okay, so Wayne's already done the stormwater, it's already gone to Dandy for review.
Good.
Um, basically, there are four, four unit buildings. Three are two-story du, like a duplex. And then on the end is a single-story, two-bedroom apartment that will be handicap usable. They're similar to, they're different, well, some of it's similar to what Scott had done originally with Gary Bush. But they're a little, they're a little bit different. Working this way, but you're coming off a road that's gonna basically dead end. I'm assuming that the site plan, I don't know exactly what you guys are looking at for a site plan. The one I've got is a hammerhead at the end of the road for fire, fire truck turnaround. The, the west edge of the site is pretty much all stormwater and septic. So, so that acts as a buffer to the mosque, the new mosque. And then the four, four unit structures are up along Woods Edge Drive. And though there's a stormwater swell to pick stuff up. Um, we haven't really, one of the things we gotta add is some landscaping, but it'll be buffered. Um, there is a problem of people walking from the new section eight housing over to the Dollar General store. And so right now they cut the site, then I know talking with Scott, he definitely wants to make certain they're not coming through his property. So he's talking to cricket. No, well, but Scott was telling me, he was talking with somebody from the fire department, they've already had a hundred and eighty nine-one-one calls, something like that, so. Think, you know, it's interesting. Um, he's talked to cricket, there's no sidewalks or anything. And depending on what we decide, there's a possibility, we wanna keep the traffic out along the road. The foot traffic.
Is, is there, is part of the trail system close to this?
No, at one point, well.
Seacord had part of a trail on, on it.
And that's so news, that never happened.
I mean.
Without my, my signature because the trail was never done.
Do, do we still have the trail committee?
The parcel I think that you're mentioning is, is still there, the segment on Seacord. I think it has its own text parcel, but yes, there is parks, recreation and trails.
Should this go to them?
It's, it certainly can.
What's that?
What for to recommend that there be a trail placed to.
Yeah, in other words, yeah, I mean, again, we wanna connect the different trails up. I mean, I understand he doesn't want them going through the, the trail through the middle of the parcel. But maybe the trail should go along Woods Edge Drive and then Huga Vista Drive, like a sidewalk would, or something like that.
That goes back to what they were talking about.
Okay, so we're talking, talking with Scott, there's a possibility, he's talked to Cricket about paving the shoulder of the road. So there's, you know, hard surface that's.
Yeah.
Out there along, it would actually go both along Woods Ed and Huga Vista so you could get down to the.
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be a great idea, yes. What was that?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we do it that way, we can, it can be kept plowed.
And you said you were gonna put some screening north of the hammerhead? How close is a housing authority property?
It's close, I mean, you're gonna end up screening, I mean, it's all housing. There's a, there's already, there's already a hedge row on the housing on the.
Oh, there is, okay. Okay.
I mean, looking at what was drawn quickly, where the islands come out separating the parking and stuff. We show like shrubs, maybe bigger trees, but the, there's lampposts. LED lights that are similar to what we used at Andy's building and at the new bank.
Yeah, I was just thinking if the traffic pulls in and heads north, are the car lights gonna shine on the housing authority building?
I, there is part planting there anyways and knowing Scott, he'd probably put some pine trees or something in there. Cause just to keep people from walking through.
Okay.
George, is there ditch along both Huga Vista and Woods Edge Drive?
Yes.
So Scott doesn't wanna put sidewalks back on the, the residential side. He wants to have people out on the road instead.
Because you, you all, you use a buffer. But the thing we've got is off the backs of these, there are patios. So, and then he's, and then he needs a swell to pick up the, the grade differential, pick up the water. So if you look at his site plan, there's like a lot of swells and then there's a culvert that runs east-west down to the stormwater practice.
So he, he probably wants some screenings between Woods Edge Drive and the back, the patios, right?
Yes, I would think so.
Yeah, to break the, screen them off and the traffic, the road and any foot traffic, that probably would be ideal.
Right, I mean, there is, there is a grade differential that we gotta work with that falls off of Woods Edge pretty good, but. When I, when I looked at the site plan that Wayne had done, the one thing I noticed was we have to go back and pick up sizes for landscaping. But he's got all the septic, the storm, all his utilities shown.
Our resolution here again is just for lead agency?
Yes.
Do you have any other questions for us, George?
I think probably for, for Friday, we'll probably resubmit this with some landscaping. I've got some more, I don't know at what scale or what level of finish the plans of the buildings were. But I've got elevations and sections and floor plans, so you can see what's being built.
George, just a suggestion, maybe, um, like a canopy for the school bus? For any kids in the complex towards the road?
There's a building out off of Huga Vista Drive.
Yeah.
Um, right at the entrance, it's a common, it's got an overhang, it's got a combination of mailboxes, it's also like water. And it's got an overhang, so they could stand there. I don't know how many.
Yeah, that's a good idea. If you had a canopy that came out and the kids could be under that.
Yeah, because the school buses are gonna go down that hammerhead.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, have the kids.
On the, on the latest, the latest set of drawings, I've got some details of that building.
Okay.
Are you gonna, um, show us like a color palette, what these, the buildings are gonna look like?
I have no idea. Um, obviously it's asphalt chingle roofs and vinyl siding. So I'm gonna say, given the fact that right now because of COVID, that half the colors they make in vinyl siding aren't available. Any dark colors you're not gonna get, they'll be light colors.
All right, can I hear a, a motion to? And Heather, would you like to call the roll?
Sandy.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Uh, Dean.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
And Jerry.
Yes. All right, George, I think that's it. Three in one night, that's all you get.
Okay, I'm going home head down. Kinda like you when we started the bank and you were gonna drill your steak for breakfast.
Yeah, I still had dinner yet, but my wife's eagerly awaiting it.
I hear ya, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have a development at Asbury and Collins Road. Again, it's a declaration of lead agency.
And again, it's got little tiny drawings.
You have a part two?
Yeah, it looks like at this point they're just got two lots that they wanna subdivide on the Asbury roadside.
All right.
I think the applicants might be here. I can't tell because it's just a phone number, but I could admit them. A little excitement here.
Hello, this is Jesse Young.
Hi Jesse, this is Jerry and the planning board.
Hey, how's everybody doing? Sorry, I'm on the phone here today. I don't have my laptop back home with me tonight. And I'm watching you on YouTube on my desktop.
As long as you mute YouTube, that'll work. Um, could you explain to us exactly what you're planning here?
Well, we've got two lots along Asbury Road. We'd like to split off and, uh, uh, so actually, you know, I've got one, one person already interested in a lot. But they want, uh, I think lot two it was, something like that. And I believe she plans on building a, a house on it. And the other lot, I don't know what somebody would use it for, most likely a single family home. But they could easily put a seasonal cottage on it if they wanted.
Jesse, are you on speakerphone?
No, I'm not.
Well, we're having a difficult time understanding you. I see everybody trying to tilt their ears.
I don't know if I can turn the volume up. Maybe I can try talking a little bit louder, though.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Okay, uh, yeah, it's basically just two, two lots on an Asbury Road. And one of them, I'm pretty sure is going to be a single family home, uh, lot number two. And lot number one, I don't know about yet, most likely another single family home.
And are there plans to develop this whole piece of property?
Uh, the interior section, we have no plans for at all right now. But in the future, we do plan on, uh, creating more lots along the front edge of Asbury Road. And, uh, and we'll see what we can do along Collins Road. There was, uh, uh, some signs of wetlands on this property when we bought it a couple of years ago. And I wanted to make sure I knew where they were, so we, we had them delineated. And I believe those are showing up on the survey map that I submitted to the planning board. And so we're trying to stay away from all the wetlands for now until we figure out how best to deal with them.
Looks extremely extensive at wetland A, but not much for wetland B.
I don't really understand the wetland B at all because it's, you know, it's, it's in the middle of a farm field.
It's kind of a high spot there and I don't know if there's a spring, but if you go out there, it's, it's swampy and there you'll find some tadpoles.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a pond that's back a little farther to the north, uh, but, but that wetland B is not on that spot. Uh, I think there was a tree back there and the former owners, the Moses family, were, were planning on putting a, a dug well back there, I think, and building a pond. But, uh, they never got to it, but, uh, that's not where wetland B actually is though, so it's kinda, kind of strange that they found this in the middle of the field. But either way, we don't plan on doing anything with, uh, wetland B. And, uh, I'm trying to find somebody that wants to farm it, but, uh, I had Bob Munson in there and, uh, he, he had one look around and said it's, it's too rocky for me.
We've been down there and it's not much fun either and wet.
Yeah, yeah, that, that front section over on the other side is a little bit wet by the ditch.
Does anyone else have a question for Jesse? We'll wanna see some more information on it.
Okay, what would you like to see?
Well, uh, uh, disturbances and um, what you're planning to build there, or if you have any plans, make sure that you have enough room for septic systems and wells and all that interesting stuff.
Okay, um, I, I, I don't know that anybody's gonna be putting a septic system on, on the lots for sure.
Is that all, has it got city sewer?
No.
Out there, no city water either, is there?
Not yet.
No, there's, there's no water and there's no sewer. But I don't know what the use is going to be of these lots.
Yeah, he's not developing, Jerry, he's just gonna sell lots off.
He's just selling the lots?
Yeah.
You're correct.
So, so, so back to.
So, so, so back to that, uh, stormwater question we had before, so he sells two lots now. And he comes back and he wants to develop maybe two more on Asbury and two more on Collins. How does the stormwater come into effect? With the, the two that we have now and maybe two or four future ones? That common plan, CJ?
That would be a question for the stormwater officer. And I can, well, they could submit a ground disturbance tally, but.
This isn't sound like. Doily in each case, right?
Yeah, let me, uh, check in with him about that, because there was an exempt subdivision on the property, so, um. We had created a, basically an exempt subdivision in office, uh, so this is the third lot, I think, created within the last two years. Uh, so let me just check in with them, the only comments that I got from. Project Review Committee were relative to the, um, Tompkins County Highway, because this is a county highway, so would they need? Um, I guess.
Herb cuts.
Yeah, um, and then the question would be, um, is it referred to them, but. Yeah, so I'll follow up with, um, Tompkins County Highway and then the Stormwater Officer, relative to the ground disturbance question.
So for tonight, we'll declare ourselves lead agency.
Motion to.
These questions will be answered at a future meeting.
I'll second.
Would you like to read the roll, Heather?
Yep, um, Sandy.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
And Jerry.
Yes. Thank you, Jesse.
Okay, well, thank you all for your time, and, uh, uh, what should I have ready for the next meeting?
CJ?
Uh, yeah, so we'll follow up with you, I'm, I'm gonna have to check in with the Stormwater Officer as well as Town Engineer and Highway, just see, um. I'm not sure if this has to be referred, um, to county planning, I don't think so, but I'll just check in with them if there's anything you need to know. Um, relative to county highway, um, for the lots as well. So I'll, you can just send me a, just send me a message and I'd be happy to coordinate.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Okay, thank you all.
Very much. Have a good night. All right. Now what's this other thing that we have? Prince permit?
Uh, there is, um, I think Tim, uh, the project, I think he's, well, I don't know, I think he's just working on the project, um. He's here to speak about the Wilson Road Minor Subdivision, they made some changes to the project, so I think he's here to speak about it, it's just a discussion item. No action. Okay, I'll go ahead and admit the. Project team, is that's right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, again, Tim. You're muted, Tim. Can you hear me, Tim?
Yeah, I just said he's back.
Did you have dinner?
Yeah, yes, I did, in between, so. It's not a three, it's only a two for, for night for me, so.
What's going on with this project?
Uh, basically, he, uh, cut it back, he was gonna do three lots along the road, and he cut it back to two. And he, he wants to build them back itself, I think is the plan, so I, I think I've shown, uh. The large parrot lot and two smaller lots up front.
Does he have any plans for the, uh, rest of that property?
No, he wants to, he kinda isolated out in the back, I guess, so.
Was there a reason he went from three to two in the front?
Yeah, I had, um, I had a, a third lot and I put a little stormwater practice in, and it looked like we were gonna get over the two-acre. Uh, threshold for complete full practices, so he cut it back. And eliminated the little retention basin we had in there, and just, so it's gonna be a, a lower key project, which was what he wanted to do.
And no plans on, because we keep on coming back to that.
I know, I, I was listening to the earlier one and seeing it expanding, so. Yeah, if he did, it would be part of a common, a larger common plan, he would have to do something for sure, so.
Okay, as long as that's understood.
Yep.
So this is just for discussion? Because we really don't have a lot of information here?
Uh, yeah, I think we're just waiting for an updated plat, I think was.
Okay.
The only piece.
Does anyone see any, um. Difficulties that could arise here?
This looks fairly straightforward.
As long as we make it clear, as mentioned with the common plan, that kinda we didn't get straightened out on the other one.
Yeah. I've already let them know.
Uh, there was a couple, um, notes from, uh, Project RU, but that was looking at a previous version of the project, because we, we just received, um, some updated submittals recently, but. Um, there was a question about, um, well locations relative to possible CWD extension three, uh, that you may wanna locate the wells close to the street as feasible. Um, to connect if, if that district ends up being built, um, okay, yep, just some kind of friendly advice there, and then, um. Uh, if you were going to be doing stormwater practices, um, if you're doing a retention, I think there was some suggestion of a retention pond and just a way to kind of incorporate that into the project. Um, so, yeah, those are.
Talk about doing that on the lower end, uh, if you had to do one, so.
All right. If no one else has a comment, then I think that that's, uh. All that we need to bring up about this one.
Just let me know, CJ, uh, what else you need, uh, for the next step, so, just a. Right now, so.
Uh, excellent, yeah, I think the biggest change that, from the packet previously was just a, a new preliminary plat from whoever, um. Of what, whatever land surveyor you guys wanted to use, um, I think that's the biggest change, and then, uh, just what I mentioned here, just now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks folks, have a good night. Take care.
Now, I lost my agenda. So, did you have a planning report or anything, CJ?
Um, I wasn't planning on giving a report, but if you have any questions about the report, I'm pretty sure I sent, I hope I sent it to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I thought I saw, I thought I saw one more item after. After this one on the agenda, but my agenda has become unusable at the moment.
Yep, just if you had any questions.
Does anyone have any questions about anything we discussed tonight, or?
Can we go home now?
I think Dean's got a long way to go, judging by his background.
Not as long as Guy does.
Yep, Guy's right out there, too.
He got the willywags.
All right, the meeting's adjourned, thank you all for a.
Okay.